I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would, I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the Congress of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from -- oh, excuse me, yes. Let's have roll call, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Here.
Wiley Currick.
Here. Now, you all emailed a copy of the minutes from our September 20th meeting. Were there any comments or concerns, any approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay, first thing. I hope everyone here is really gonna be fans of ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings, because that's all we have tonight. Lots of them. Before we start, at the top of the agenda, I think that it's only proper and fitting that I formally announce what happened yesterday to the City of Decatur. We had a win yesterday, right, Melissa?
We did have a win.
Yes, we did. We were notified that NDOT awarded 80 million, nearly 80 million dollars, going to rural communities for infrastructure improvements. Among those improvements were things like bridges, road projects, safety projects, sidewalk programs, trail enhancements, et cetera. And Decatur was awarded $2,098,125 for intersection improvement at the Five Points Intersection here in Decatur. What that improvement will be is yet to be seen. It will likely happen in the year 2020 to 2021. So, there's a lot of paperwork and things that will have to happen prior to that that NDOT will basically handle. Jeremy, Melissa, and I went up and made a presentation a few months ago, and we felt the presentation went well at the time. We were not totally clear as to if we got the funding, how much they would fund, and we're very pleased with the amount that we got. So, we still don't know any more particulars. We haven't talked to NDOT. We don't know how much time we have to go over all the details, but nonetheless, it's a win for Decatur, and I'm very happy about it. Now, Melissa, first thing on the agenda is a public hearing in reference to the grant application for the Madison Street Plaza funding. So, if I could, have a motion to suspend the council meeting and open a public hearing.
So move.
A motion and a second to suspend the council meeting.
Will you do that all in the motion like I just said?
No.
You probably should do it two separate.
Okay, a motion to suspend the council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Now open the public.
Now.
Make a motion to open the public works.
Public hearing.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Melissa?
Good evening, and this is a public hearing on the Madison Street Plaza and Streetscape Revitalization Project through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. This is the second of two required public hearings for the grant. The grant amount is $500,000. We are responsible for a 20 percent match. The grant application is due on October 14th. We will be notified of award on December 1st. And again, this public hearing is to share with you some details about the project and then to also take public questions and comments about the Madison Street project. We're working with Kevin McCroy and JPR, and he's here tonight also to answer any questions you could have. This project is to create a Madison Street Plaza on Madison between First and Second Streets, and then to turn the corner in both directions on Second Street and do some streetscape improvements. The Main Street Design Committee has worked to pick out a design and some amenities and kind of a theme of the streetscape format of the street and Second Street that can continue on throughout the downtown. So, Kevin, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you've dropped the first one.
At this time, we'll take any questions, comments, for, against, or otherwise for this project.
Comments from the public, comments from the council.
The state likes it when we have nice things or questions about the project in our public hearing minutes.
Melissa, can you explain a little bit about the design and also the features as far as blocking the roadway for pedestrian use?
We've had a lot of downtown events this summer, and we've found to me that there needs to be a designated space in the downtown area for those events that have benches and are pedestrian-friendly and event-friendly. So, the setup will have trees, like we said, benches, the paving and the sidewalk and the road will kind of lead itself into the river, so it's gonna have a little bit more of a fun look to it. And the street will be set up that we can easily put up and down tents and sound system and sculptures. And then when we turn the corner onto Second Street, some of the same colors and materials are gonna turn the corner, so that everything has a look that it flows together.
And hopefully, one of the desires is that either end of the plaza where the street would be a sculptural element, that would also second as a gateway, so it could be literally closed during special events that are being held on the street, which really is more of a plaza than a street, is a better way to call it. So, when it was shut down, you could block traffic, but not look like orange wooden barricades out there, something a little bit nicer, have a flavor, then tie into the arts. In fact, there was even discussion as maybe a competition with artists to come up with the idea, what that could look like. That's exciting.
Is there a question?
We've got regular pictures of --
Renderings?
Yes. I can show them there now, if I can show them before you leave today.
One of the -- I think there was two different options at one time about whether Madison becomes a one-way street or not. Is that any more discussion on that?
It has been shown at this time as a one-way street heading east from Second to First. Parking still remains on one side of the street. So, there still are parking places, parallel parking places allowed on the street. But the car really becomes a secondary element, and the pedestrian becomes the main element, which is really the theme of the whole street or the plaza, if you will.
And obviously--
So, here in a normal times, can it stays open and functions as a street?
And obviously, sounds like regardless of lots, street building's gonna come down, and that could be a parking lot--
Yes.
--to make up for any lost spaces for businesses in that area.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And of course, we wouldn't make a determination about a possible one-way street without first confirming with the city council.
And as I understand, Kevin, you're looking at using the streetscape as kind of what would be extended out onto Second Street if we go down or at least blend that in so that it would be similar?
That's correct. It turns the corner, as Melissa said, and what happens at that point, it becomes more of a traditional streetscape in the fact that it's not as -- I'll use the word whimsical because what we're trying to do on the plaza is a fun space for festival events and art displays to be shut down. So, the balance of the streets, Second Street, and hopefully a footprint to be used by Decatur in the future, would be a little bit of a simpler format of pavers, new lights, that would all be in the same family, if you will, but on a simpler scale that could reach throughout all the downtown street corners. So, we're wrapping the corner right now on the grant application, a half a block to the north and a half a block to the alleyways.
On the east side only?
On Second Street, right, on the east side only, and enhancing those alleyways back to the east at as collectors for pedestrians to come from the parking places into Second Street and up and down the downtown area.
This plaza then acts as a connection between the riverfront and the downtown area?
Yes, like it's -- and it's also a view corridor, if you will, from the historic courthouse to the riverfront. That would be, it's gonna be a really nice vantage point to connect visually the courthouse and the riverfront and all the futures that will occur in the future.
Great.
Well, just as a comment, I'd like to say that with the events that we've had downtown so far, which have been very successful, it really has not interfered me with the traffic in the city. And what I find really interesting is on several occasions, I have had people stop and ask me what's going on there, and these are people from out of city, out of state even, coming through, and once you relate to them, there's something just go up, elbow over and come on in. So, it's like, I think it's a really good thing for downtown Decatur, more people come through here than what you think that are just traveling.
And what's it, is there a committee that is picking out these streetscapes or--
The Main Street Design Committee has been meeting with Kevin regularly to kind of decide what the look of that plaza is, down to what are the pavers and what color are those pavers on the concrete and the sidewalk and in the street, and what are the streetlights and what are the benches?
And the street trees and the whole--
That committee has taken hold of that project and made those recommendations.
And what kind of--
The Main Street Design Committee.
It's been a very -- it's been a good process. I mean, it's really started with ideas, and now it's culminated with the submittal that we have. Well, they designed, and it's not 100% in concrete, I should mention that. There's still flexibility, i.e. the one-way street, like we mentioned, some other items. But we're at a point now to submit this at the deadline of the 14th, which is a week from this Friday, that we pretty much need to have most of the stuff identified, but we could still change a color of the pavement, or a street tree could change, or that type of a light fixture can still have some flexibility in it. So, we're not nailed 100% down at this time with the design. Any other questions?
I will just make one comment, and that is that I know that Melissa has worked very hard on this grant for several months, and she's coming down the stretch here. And with all the other projects that she has been involved in this last week, the bicentennial celebration and everything, she's done a fantastic job of getting this done. So, I told her today I should shut your door up there and keep your nose.
And I will second that from a consultant standpoint, and we've worked with a lot of communities and a lot of private grant writers and others, grant writers, and Melissa's been just a real pleasure to work with.
We have a good team with Main Street and Kevin McCroy, though.
Yep, yep, we do have. It is a good--
We've got to get on the back to work, however.
Yep, yep, yep.
But she has, and she's good guy.
On the funding, I understand that you have a funding, but how do you go about, like, when you pay like a different paper or just a -- are you doing a bid for people to come in for those type of things?
Once we're notified if we get the grant, then Kevin McCroy would do construction documents, and then those would go out to bid. Would we kind of have an idea what the budget is now, knowing that we're actually going to begin that bid?
Those will be competitive bids, and also everything and the project has to be, all aspects of ADA, Americans, the Justify Act will have it 100% being implemented. And it's exciting. It's a beautiful project. I really look forward to getting built.
And when we find out that we have the grant?
Well, no, we're supposed to go on December 1st.
Can I ask your name?
For the record, your name.
Oh, Elaina, E-L-A-N-A.
Just participation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Public hearing. If not, move for--
Make a motion to close the--
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, we need to make a matter of record, the notice of the public hearing.
I'll make matter of record of the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the public hearing, notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion to open up the council meeting.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second to enter back into our council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution authorizing that same application for that grant for the city's local match. As Melissa said, the grant itself is a $500,000 grant. City's match is 20% or $100,000. We have that budgeted, hoping that we get it. So, Tim has a resolution here. What's, is it 15?
This is a requirement of the grant that we do a resolution that the council authorizes that the mayor can sign all the application documents as well as commit that local match.
And the local match is actually greater than the city's contribution, is that correct, Melissa? And that's reflected in the resolution. There's also $1,000 coming from Main Street and $170,000 from the capital campaign funds at the foundation.
And we have to itemize those in the resolution.
I make a motion to introduce Resolution 2016-15 by short title only.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
I have a motion and two seconds to approve Resolution 2016-15 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Resolution number 2016-15, short title, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, authorizing the submittal of the Main Street Revitalization Program Application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, establishing the City of Decatur's Local Match Commitment and addressing related matters.
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2016-15.
Second. Motion to approve Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 2016-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Next is another resolution for the same area, the Madison Street Grant Area, Application Area, and it is for areas of slum and blight.
And we're gonna go with areas of blight and areas in need of redevelopment.
Right, blight and redevelopment.
This is another requirement of the grant, and they just wanna make sure that council designates this as a blighted area so they're not spending money on carrying out something that was new. There's actually something that's in need of redevelopment.
Right, yep.
The word slum is no longer in the resolution.
Blight and redevelopment.
And redevelopment.
Right. And it tracks definitions are contained in the Code of Federal Regulations with regard to a blighted area, and then also an area in need of development or redevelopment follows the state statute by definition, so.
Make a motion to introduce Resolution 2016-16 by short title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2016-16 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Resolution number 2016-16, short title, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which declares a portion of the downtown area as a blighted area in need of redevelopment.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-16.
Second. Motion and a second for approval of Resolution 2016-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have our final reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-12, which is the ordinance for 2017 budget. Do you have that, Tim, or does Philis do this? Philis has it.
Make a motion--
We have already had approved this ordinance on two readings. We table it at our last meeting, just in case there would be any changes or whatever. And with that camp--
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2016-12, that's third reading by short title. Second.
I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-12, and it's third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Ordinance number 2016-12, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016-12.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2016-12. All in favor? Excuse me, roll call vote on that, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2016-12 has been adopted. Next is a resolution to sell a police vehicle to the Adams County Community Corrections. That was brought before the Board of Works earlier, and was recommended that the mayor sign off on that, and now we need to bring it to council for their approval.
I'm making motion to introduce Resolution 2016-14 by short title.
Second. It's 2016-14. I have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2016-14 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you.
Resolution 2016-14, short title, Joint Resolution of the Decatur Board of Public Works and Safety and of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes and approves the sale of a surplus vehicle to Adams County, Indiana, for use by the Adams County Corrections Department.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-14.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Next will be two salary ordinances. We will do first and second readings on both of them, with final reading two weeks from this evening. The first salary ordinance is an amendment to our 2016 salary, and what it involves are a few promotions within the, I'm gonna call it the Street Department right now for lack of better words, and that would be salary ordinance, Tim, number--
Two.
The amendment.
13.
14.
14.
14. That would be ordinance 2016-14, an amendment to this year's salary ordinance.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-14 on first read by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-14 in its first reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim, please.
Ordinance number 2016-14, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends the city's current salary ordinance, ordinance 2015-15, which creates new salary positions, which establishes biweekly pay and funding for such positions, which eliminates an existing salary position, which reassigns city personnel.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-14 on first reading by short title.
Tell a second about--
I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-14. In its first reading, we'd have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes. Thank you.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-14 on second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-14 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-14, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends city's current salary ordinance, ordinance 2015-15, which creates new salary positions, which establishes biweekly pay and funding for such positions, which eliminates an existing salary position, which reassigns city personnel.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-14 on second reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-14 on its second reading by short title. We'd have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
You're wanting to get this in place by the end of the month, correct?
Yeah, but we can do the--
We can do that at the 18th.
Third reading at the 18th, yeah.
I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2016-14 until our next meeting on October 18th.
Second. Motion and a second to table ordinance 2016-14 for its third reading at our October 18th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Now, we have our 2017 salary ordinance to go through, and that would be 2016-15, I assume. Philis, you have that one? Here's 14. Okay, so looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2016-15 on its first reading by short title.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-15 on its first reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-15, short title, An Ordinance Fixing the Salaries and Wages for Employees of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2017.
It was a little easier, wasn't it?
Yes. Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-15 on its first reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-15. On its first reading, we'd have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Currick.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016-15 on second reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016-15 on its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-15, short title, An Ordinance Fixing the Salaries and Wages for Employees of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2017.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016-15 on second reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016-15 on its second reading. We'd have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kershaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
Make a motion to table ordinance 2016-15 for its reading on our next meeting on October 18th.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2016-15 until our October 18th meeting for passage at that time, for third reading and passage at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Next is more or less a matter of record for Northeast Indiana Regional Coordinating Council, NERC, and one of their staff, Kyle Quant, to administer our grant application with the DNR for the Wetlands Preserve, Nature Preserve area over here behind the old Grubbers Building. We had that brought to the Board of Works, and it was recommended that I sign that, that we needed approval by council, so I think you're all familiar with that. The fee that NERC is charging us is $10,000, and it's a very cumbersome DNR project, so we felt we needed their expertise.
Not to exceed 10.
Not to exceed 10, right. I would look for a motion to okay that.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the funding for administering the grant for the Wetlands Preserve project for NERC.
It will be paid for--
It will be paid for through our CEDAT fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Guess what? We have an ordinance now. Next is an ordinance to lower the speed limit on North Second Street. Jeremy, that would be from and to where?
Bunge recently approached the City of Decatur about speakers and traffic issues right around the Bunge plant. What they're asking for is an area from Central Avenue to 13th Street.
From Central Avenue.
They're having a lot of issues with cars speeding through there, with the amount of people that they have crossing the street, workers. There's been a lot of close calls in the last six or eight months with the golf carts and such coming from Bunge going, you know, across the street and such, and people also trying to avoid the railroad, the railroad crossing, which we are going to address after harvest, working with Bunge and the railroad, so that's a total separate topic. I met with Gene, the new plant manager, and his team roughly a month or two ago. We discussed a lot of little things that Gene was asking the city for, which, you know, this is the final little piece of their request. Basically, what he is asking is just to lower the speed on the five mile an hour, and then[1774.41] also to ask the police to kind of assist with, especially this time of year with harvest, with helping with a little extra patrol if possible, to try to slow some of these people down, because they've had plenty of near misses with cars and workers, cars and semis coming and going. Business is going well for Bungee, and they anticipate it to pick up here in the near future, which is going to also compound their problem. So they're just asking for some support. I forwarded it to Tim and Ken about three, four weeks ago. It's really a need for the board at this point as to whether you want to move on.
And so, council understands, if you don't have an ordinance that reduces the speed by statute, the speed limit's 30 miles an hour, you can reduce it five miles without doing a traffic study, so this is being done without a traffic study, except the request of Bungee.
Current speed limit is 30, going down to 25.
Be reduced down to 25.
So again, where does it?
It would be from 13th Street or US 27th to Central Avenue.
Central Avenue is a one block long street that turns south off of Second Street.
If you go over the second set of railroad tracks next to where the trucks come in to...
Just past that.
Yeah, it's just past that. It's First Road on the right, is Central Avenue.
There's about three houses on the right, and then there's a street. That's Central Avenue.
All the way to 13th.
That's really, it's going over railroad tracks when you should be slowing down anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
I make a motion to lower the speed limit.
Oh, this is, yeah. This is an ordinance, so.
What's the number on that?
This would be, I guess, ordinance 2016 dash 16.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its first reading by short title.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to place ordinance 2016 dash 16 in its first reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016 dash 16, short title, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 Schedule VIII Speed Limits for the Purpose of Reducing the Maximum Speed on Second Street between US Highway 27, 13th Street, and Central Avenue to 25 miles per hour.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its first reading by short title.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its first reading. We'd have roll call vote, please.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koushaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2016 dash 16 on second reading by short title only.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016 dash 16, short title, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 Schedule VIII Speed Limits for the Purpose of Reducing the Maximum Speed on Second Street between US Highway 27, 13th Street, and Central Avenue to 25 miles per hour.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2016 dash 16 on second reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its second reading by short title. We'll have roll call vote.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koushaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2016 dash 16 on its third reading by short title.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2016 dash 16 in its third reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Ordinance number 2016 dash 16, short title, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 Schedule VIII Speed Limits for the Purpose of Reducing the Maximum Speed on Second Street between US Highway 27, 13th Street, and Central Avenue to 25 miles per hour.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016 dash 16 by first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2016 dash 16. We'd have roll call vote.
Kim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koushaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. Ordinance 2016 dash 16 has been adopted. That's all the resolutions and ordinances for tonight. Yeah. Are they going to put up flashers or flags, or when you going to change the signs?
Uh, soon.
Soon. Okay.
Check stock, any real license was on the agenda for tonight, so I'll check stock and make sure that we have them.
Okay. But we'll give them a little bit of warning?
Yeah. I just have one comment, not much. I'll go ahead first.
That's everything on our agenda. I'm going to go to Tim next, because Tim almost always has something.
I just, I'm going to make one comment, I'll make it brief. I want to thank Jeremy in particular for going to bat for the city with Indi, and he's developed a great relationship with them, and it's paid off. I think also, you need to understand that this is really kind of an outcrop of the efforts that we made a couple of years ago to pursue this project as part of the stellar application. I think that bodes well for other projects that we had identified. We've gotten before these different awarding agencies, they know us, they know we're prepared, and it's paying off, and this is a great example of where that has. So I look for more successes in the future.
Piggybacking off of that, I will have to say that yesterday, when we got this notification, one of the first phone calls I made was to John Schultz. Number one, let him know, and number two, to thank him, because it was his spearheading it through the stellar process that caused us to go after this a third time. So he was excited like I was, and congratulated us. Bill?
I think it's nice to help Bungee out and everything, but I think maybe as a city, maybe we can make a request to Bungee. I know over in Huntington, and I said this to Larry Macklin, and it seems like I get nowhere with it. Maybe I have to go out and do it myself, but I know Mr. Koushaw could also go that route also. We need to initiate a quiet zone down there for the rail traffic. Like I said, Huntington did it, I know it takes a lot, but as many things that we've done for Bungee, possibly we could make a request to their GM to create a quiet zone down there. I, we have very little, we have a lot of traffic that goes through those intersections, but all those intersections are gated, or the rail traffic is gated, and I, and we're not driving fast through those areas.
I think the...
I don't see the purpose of it. Blasting those horns all the time to warn traffic when the gates are down anyway, so I mean...
And the biggest issue is at nighttime, when it's already quiet, and yeah, Bob lives close by there.
I don't know how people live on that street, driving slightly like Lewis and them. I don't know how they live.
Yeah, I think our...
And Harrison.
I think our Friday evening editorial writer referred to that guy as Horatio Hornblower. And it is terrible.
And the weird thing is, some of those guys just beep, it's a quick blast.
And this guy...
And some of them go ten, twelve seconds, that's uncountable.
Yeah.
I know he's had that problem over there, and I did read that they, it took them a while to get it done, but they was actually able to initiate a, what they call a quiet zone through the city there, that they don't have the farm traffic.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Bill. I duly noted, and yeah, I'll make an effort to express our concern to Gene over there at Bungee.
Sounds like it's me to do it.
No, Craig. Anything else? No. Comments from Greg?
Just a couple things. We weren't quite as fortunate as the city was. We didn't quite get 2.4 million, but we did get notified today that we had almost an $18,000 grant to the Tenth County District Planning Council, and its use will be over the next three years to be able to send six representatives from the district to slip water rest and school at South Bend. So the grant was kind of drafted by Assistant Chief Maloney from Fort Wayne and myself and Carla Markov from Adams County EMA, and Adams County is going to be the fiscal agent. So we think between Fort Wayne and us and Bluffton, that that'll kind of be the priority for the people that get to go over the next three years. So hopefully they can send six. Some of us on that team are, don't like swimming that well anymore, and getting old age, so we got, we have $7,000, that's the county board minister, and the other thing, farm equipment's on the road, harvesters and pole swing, just, you know, I know they create hazard, but we've had some accidents over the years, just kind of give farm equipment a little bit of right of way and heads up. It's hard and difficult for them to pull over sometimes, and just kind of a heads up to the community that the harvest, fall harvests and full progress, and going to be some traffic on the county roads, some big equipment, and just everybody gives a little. We don't have those, and accidents will be really serious accidents. So just pay a little, pay a little attention out in the county that the farm equipment is out and about. And our open house will be next Wednesday from 4:30 until 8:00, and this is in conjunction with National Fire Prevention Week. And on Sunday, the 9th, our fire station flag will be, by presidential proclamation that half passed, honored 67 firefighters that have lost their, lost their lifeline in the year this year. So give a chance to stop down to fire station next Wednesday and pay us a visit. We got several things going on, and a good opportunity for the community to stop in and see their equipment, and learn a little bit about us, and spend a little time with the project.
Kids love it.
They love it.
Yep. And you might even give them a hot dog.
There will be, as long as they last, some hot dogs, some chips, and some cookies, and some cold drinks, and you got to stop and see.
Well, congratulations on the grant. That's good, great. Jim, you got anything?
I don't know.
Roger.
Not seeing.
Ann?
Nothing.
Dan?
Nothing.
Bill, anything else?
No, I said my piece.
Melissa?
Yes. Yesterday, I worked with gentlemen, we submitted a grant to State Farm. They have a grant program available, we requested funding for 20 additional hearing and hearing speakers. We anticipate hearing by the end of the year or maybe the beginning of next year on that one. If you haven't checked out their art out here, thank you to Mary, this is a beautiful art display out here. It's from local artist Jim Snyder. So make sure you check that out. Thank you to everyone who helped out and came out for the bicentennial celebration on Friday. We had a good time, and if anybody needs recycling information, we're still getting phone calls, and we're happy to still share that information with us. So please call if you have questions.
Thank you. And Melissa, thank you again for the good job you did on the bicentennial. She was our local representative here on the bicentennial, county bicentennial committee. I mean, there were other representatives, but Melissa was kind of the point person, and she did a great job organizing everything this past Friday. I believe that Melissa may have a photograph of Mayor Schultz on that horse out here in the lobby, if anyone is interested, so. Jeremy?
Of the 18 additional streets that we are paving, a good portion of the money went down to eight areas. Those eight areas, the work will start back up tomorrow. They will be milling and prepping streets for the next two days, potentially start paving Friday, and about Friday, they will be in town paving the rest of the eight areas. They're following.
Did our water testing on Bowman go okay, Dan? Do you know?
Never heard about it. Bill, I took the second test, and I haven't heard about the second test.
Okay.
So they're going to melt Bowman.
Make it ready.
Kind of go away.
Yep.
While we get to a couple little, final little finishing touches, it won't take too long to get that and then recover that.
Okay. Jim, I got a question, if you know answer. The trees behind the Riverside Center, what happened?
ADP, they're running power, new power all the way through there.
Really?
They're paying us for the trees, but it, yeah, it's quite a change up there.
You hear more about power than trees, for sure.
Also, the yard waste collection will end on October 14th, preparation for leaf collection. So I know it's been in the papers several times, but I always find it out plenty of time. We, too, recycling was very successful. Talking with Ethan Snyder, Ethan's the individual that we share with the county, we come up with a logging software that we can put on the truck to track pickups, so we have some pretty good participation numbers periodically while we'll send the iPad with the driver. It's just a simple touchscreen as they stop and pick up. With this, we can see the areas that may not be participating, or they need some little help, maybe they didn't get the information, maybe they did, maybe they need more education. So we're going to be focusing on that here in the fourth quarter of the year, trying to promote this as much as we can. You know, obviously Ken and I have talked, the more participation we have, obviously the more successful program it's going to be, and we're going to keep the cost down. We're going to work towards that, just working out some little details, seems to be going fairly well. I think everyone's surprised at the volume that we picked up in the two weeks that we've done a random program. So I think it's going to be successful.
Thank you, Jeremy. Council members, comments? Matt?
I just wanted to publicly acknowledge a big day for the Porter family down in Tampa, Florida. Vic Porter was inducted into the National Marine Manufacturers Hall of Fame, and I know the Porter family is very proud of that, and they should be. What they've given to this community really is incredible in terms of employment and within their industry, to be recognized, I think is pretty special, so it's neat to see today.
Yep. Congratulations to Vic, that's great. Other comments? Wiley?
I agree with you. I'd like to commend Melissa for the preparation for the bicentennial celebration and coming into Decatur and all that planning, but also because Melissa's, she was involved with the county committee, she had to be down in Southern County to start with. Her mother came in and really helped make sure everything was set up properly and organized, and that was a real call above duty, so appreciate that, too.
You see where Melissa gets it from?
I know. And I would reiterate the recycling, thank you all for the organization. As a homeowner, I am appreciating it, and my wife appreciates it, too.
Good. Cam? Tyler? Greg? Greg. Phyllis? Public?